Are we ready in the back? I'd like to call the meeting to order. It's the regular Board of Education meeting for the School District of Waukesha on Wednesday, April 19th, 2017. We're running just a few minutes behind because we had an important committee meeting that was prior to this. And we apologize for being a little late, but thank you for your patience. We have a lot of important business to do and we'll get to that HR business later today, too. So please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sue, will you please take the roll call?
William Baumgart.
Here.
Barbara Brusink.
Here.
Greg Dietz.
Here.
Amanda Roddy.
Here.
Patricia Madden.
Here.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Here.
Kurt O'Brien.
Here.
Karen Reinacek.
Here.
Joseph Comer.
Here. And Sue, have we been properly posted with the media?
Yes, we have.
Okay, thank you. Tonight, we'd like to start off our meeting with bright lights. The Young Leaders and Gentlemen of Waukesha, which is over at Waukesha North. Will you please tell us about your organization? Introduce yourselves also as you start out.
Definitely. Thank you for having us here today. Thank you. We are from Waukesha North High School. We are the Young Leaders and Gentlemen of Waukesha. We are about promoting youth gentleman-ship, basically, to be leaders, to show us respect starting at a young age. And so far, right now, we have about 12 to 20 members. Definitely do a lot for developing leadership. These are some of the examples of our members. We even opened up a coffee stand called Polar Espresso. Been doing widely well during winter. And now during spring, closer to summer seasons, we are selling lemonade. That's actually a very wide business. That's actually growing very well. And we even have cups already, too, with a different logo design. And we also have been doing a couple lessons already of what we were doing in the club, like the lesson of 10/80/10. 10% of people will always love you, care about you for who you are. 10% will always hate you, dislike you for who you are. And then there's the 80% that can be swayed either/or that we definitely need to play an impact on. I am but one of the members. The other members have other lessons that we have learned, too, at the time.
So with the lemonade that we are selling, it's aimed more at time in business management with money and, you know, controlling what you can and can't do with, you know, I might not be able to make it today, but, you know, I'll make up for the time tomorrow. And with just all in all, you know, developing, you know, a leadership role in, all right, I'll step up and do this today, or I'll step up and do it tomorrow and someone else will fill in for me because I can't do it today because I may have, you know, something that came up, you know? And, you know, as for other lessons...
So in addition, we've partnered with the school's special ed department and we've had them deliver coffee to some of the staff around the school. This has helped teach them valuable life lessons and skills that we can, they can use at a later date when they're trying to apply for jobs and such.
Our logo, it is, we made it in the winter time because we had an idea of starting to sell hot chocolate and the Polar Espresso, the name just...
The name was created by students at the high school and the logo was created by students. And the creator of this logo is actually right here, which is this young man. Okay? So it's pretty amazing what he came up with and he just blew it away. We also began learning the seven habits of highly effective teens. And so we already had our first lesson. And one of the first things that we learned about was, what was that?
Habit.
Habit. And we learned that habit can make you and propel you beyond any expectations and it can also bring you down and tear you down. And it's all about habit. So we are trying to instill in the leadership and values and commitment and responsibility and working together as a team and always looking out for other people. And that's why we want our special ed department to be part of us, to be part of something greater. And we, the club, the boys here plus the others that you don't see today, we all work together. We all make little profits here and there. And the special ed department doesn't give us any money and we don't ask them to give us any money. We do it because we want them to be part of the school and we want to recognize us as being members of our school. So we ambition great things, including a little shop that we want to put in the front of the school, at least something momentary. Our principal, Ms. Newcomer, has been very, very supportive. Mr. Schly, the whole administrative team has been extremely, extremely supportive. They have never said no or closed the door, shut us down in any way, shape, or form. And I want to commend them because I don't do that enough. So thank you for your time. We appreciate it. We wish we had more time to tell you more things. And some of the gentlemen are going to be left out. I think one of you, because I only brought eight mugs as a gift to the board members, but the ladies are definitely going to have one. They tell the kids that Mr. Dr. Gray is going to be escaped because I can always come back and bring him one. So one of the gentlemen will be left out, but I will certainly...
You can find me later.
Okay. All right. So let's go ahead and you go. If you had any questions or any comments for them, please, you know, you're more than welcome.
Baumgart.
Yes. For the young man here, I guess I'd like to just share this. As you probably are well aware, sometimes our teens don't have the best image in the world, in the society or the community. And it's very important, I think, that you carry that on. A lot of us in the school board and within the school recognize that there's, the teens are really wonderful. I mean, they do so much and are willing to do so much and they can learn so well. So I do want to compliment you on going ahead with this idea. I also want to share the other board members because they may not know this, but Fred?
Yes.
And Vince?
Vincent Ciano, his dog had a very fortunate event and so he couldn't make it here.
Good. Well, I met these two young men at our new teacher gathering in January. And it just tells you something. We have two new teachers that came, joined us last September and they are moving ahead with this idea. And I think, I often say, one of the things that's unique about our district, or maybe not unique, but special about our district, is we encourage our teachers to be innovative and thinkers. And so enlightening to see you and Vince and your team moving in that direction. I really appreciate it and I think you deserve a lot of credit. I love it.
This logo, you should be proud, we should be proud of our students in Waukesha. This logo was also created by a student at our school. But the aprons for us to wear them and for special education children to also wear them. Thank you. We really appreciate your time.
Any other questions?
Just want to say, thank you. What an outstanding effort on your behalf. Thank you for doing that. We need that, but so do all the schools.
It's our pleasure. It's our pleasure.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Mr. O'Brien?
No, I'm looking at the...
Can't leave yet, guys. Can't leave yet.
Okay, that's okay. I'm concerned about your time.
Oh. Well, so am I, but I'm going to use some. I'm looking at that polar bear and I'm looking at, you know, the designer and it's like there's like a self, a little bit of a self expression.
I thought he was going to ask us if we're a hot cocoa right now.
It's a very impressive piece. You know, Starbucks is going to have to watch out if you keep coming on like this. And I'm also impressed with some of the, you know, the key points you made, the 10/80/10, you know? I think, you know, kids go through that and adults go through that where they think everybody's against them. In reality, it's not that big of a number, just like there's not that big of a number that's really for you. It's the 80 in between that is swayable. So I think those are great life lessons that you're starting at a young age and it'll help you get, make it through more difficult times as life moves on. So that's great.
And Fred, I think you had mentioned in the past that you're looking for any leadership material suggestions and ideas, people to speak. So if any of our board members have ideas, people to speak at some of the meetings or any leadership type of literature, get in touch with Fred.
Yeah, I will certainly reach out. I will certainly get those emails and Mr. Baumgart offered some already and I'm pretty sure that the rest of you will be more than happy. We're also learning about, we almost forgot about ties and bow ties and dressing properly and professionally. So we're slowly taking off, but I see great things and, you know, we're not giving up. Few are called, or sorry, a lot are called, but very few answered the call. That's what I tell my students, don't worry about it. Next year is a new year and we'll get bigger.
I'll leave the group with just a thought to ponder. John Maxwell is someone who's been studying leadership a long time. And he summarizes leadership in one word and that word is influence. And I would just let you guys think on that. Perhaps at your next meeting, you can have a discussion on that.
We will write a report on that, sir.
Thank you so much.
We appreciate it. Thanks.
I'll expect it at the next board meeting.
Have a great evening. Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. We're going to have a new item tonight, or a moved up item, I should say. We're going to move the superintendent's report up to now.
Right. Thank you. I asked to move this up because my total presentation is regarding a young man from North High School. And as the board knows, last year, I helped out with the track team. And this is one of the young men that I had an opportunity to coach and very, very hard working young man. So that when you see this video, when I saw this about Zach and our maid program, it was no surprise to me that they chose him because of his work ethic. So if we can cue the video, this is, I don't recall who made it, but this is kind of talks about our maid program and the partnerships that we have with different businesses for our hands-on skills. So...
Nearly seven in 10 manufacturers say they have trouble filling jobs. A problem of the skills gap. The positions require technical training that workers don't have. The nation's CEOs recently told President Trump that the problem needs a national solution. Contessa Brewer in Sussex, Wisconsin looks at one company's solution.
I have AP Physics, AP Calculus, AP Chemistry, AP English, Graphic Arts, and US History.
Zach Sly may sound like he's college-bound, but...
It makes a lot more sense to just start working right away.
So this high school junior in Waukesha, Wisconsin is jumping right in, joining Quad Graphics as a paid youth apprentice.
They're putting me under their wing, teaching me everything they can. For the most part, I'm observing, like I said, but I have jogged a few times or wrapped up a skid or two and yeah, just help out wherever I can.
Quad Graphics is a massive printing company, employs more than 22,000 people globally. Like many American companies, it's struggling to find enough skilled labor. In Wisconsin alone, it has 150 open positions. CEO Joel Quadraji says even manual labor jobs now come with the expectation of training for more technical positions.
If you tour through our plants, you'll see that we use a lot of high-tech equipment and there's been a big migration towards automation. But over the years, you know, we've seen a big decline in the number of people coming into the trades.
Quad Graphics revived its apprenticeship program more than 10 years ago. First recruiting from within the company and then going to vocational and trade schools.
There wasn't enough skilled people to go around. By the end, we were fighting internally over enough people to run equipment and to develop into apprentices for electrical and mechanical.
So this year, Quad Graphics went to 16 area high schools, offering apprenticeships for school credit and $12 an hour, far more than most teenagers may get part-time jobs. The company accepted all the students who applied, nine of them.
We don't have a really good enthusiasm from the administrators or the counselors in most high schools.
And the students may not understand what an apprenticeship is.
I think they hear so much about four-year university from parents, counselors, administration, and other friends that they forget about the usefulness of the tech schools and the skilled labor jobs.
Jeff Bowman teaches graphics and printing at Waukesha North High School. He battles the common dogma that a college degree is necessary for career success. And he struggles to keep his programs afloat financially.
You look at this shop right here, there's probably easily $200,000 in equipment. Two, school districts don't have the funding to really have that type of equipment in all their schools.
So companies like Quad Graphics partner up to support tech ed in schools.
My only support really was from my teacher, Mr. Bowman. He was the one who, he knows that I'm really into tech ed. He got me into printing.
After his apprenticeship, Zach could make $25 an hour. He could still attend university, as his parents expect, but he says even they are coming around. For tonight's business report, Contessa Brewer, Sussex, Wisconsin.
So Zach is here tonight. And now, along with being a national celebrity, we also have featured Zach on our promo brochure that we use with realtors and other people who are interested in coming to the district. So Zach, would you like to come? I have a feeling there will be a few questions for you.
Wonderful.
So this is Zach Sly, North High School, and he was the feature of our film.
Welcome, Zach.
Appreciate it.
What questions do we have, Zach? Mr. Baumgart.
Well, I would say, we appreciate it. But it is curious to, you know, you've taken a lot of AP classes and obviously, yeah, that would typically identify you towards a college career, which you can always do. I understand that. But what kind of turned you on recently into the tech ed type stuff?
Well, the main thing, I've always been into tech ed and I'm still on the fence about going to a four-year or a two-year, even though it may have seemed in that video that I was for sure going to a two-year. If I go to a four-year, I'm still going into the tech ed field. But if I do go to a technical college, it would be because there's an apprenticeship with Quad Graphics and WCTC where you can work full-time and then go to class once or twice a week. And then they pay for your schooling and all of that. So I'd have a job for sure right out of college, which is the main thing why you'd go to college, to get a job and it's a pretty stable job. So it seems like it would make sense.
One last note. There's a real shortage of tech ed teachers in the state of Wisconsin.
Absolutely.
Do you want to introduce your guests who are here with you tonight?
Yeah, my mom and my dad are here.
Okay.
Aw, how nice.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yeah, you know, I'm one of those advocates that thinks we need a balance between, between the so-called college prep drive and the tech drive, like they do in most European countries. I mean, so I'm glad you made a choice that you feel comfortable with for yourself and I'm glad you made even change that choice if you choose to. That's fine. I think that one of the things that we've lost in our public schools is this hands-on type opportunity for kids because not enough kids would sign up for it, really, is what happened. I think our auto program, we struggled to get kids into the auto program some years back and it was hard to keep it going. And so I'm glad that, I don't know, was there other kids besides yourself that took on this apprenticeship out of North or is it just you?
No, I'm the only one out of all of the Waukesha school this year.
Well, someone has to be a leader, you know? So I hope you stick with it and I hope other parents see this and see that there's nothing wrong with my child being interested in this stuff. You know, it's a good thing, so.
Mrs. Brusink.
Yes. How did you get selected to do this?
I just applied. I was a student aide for my tech ed teacher, Mr. Bowman. And he would have me like printing off the Waukesha School District envelopes. So I kind of got a feel for the press. And I was always into tech ed and he knew that and he knew that I was driven towards it. And he told me, because he has a lot of connections at Quad, he told me that they're starting up this apprenticeship program again and he told me to apply and I got in, so.
Who selected you? Quad Graphics or the district?
It was Quad Graphics.
It was Quad Graphics. Okay.
Here's Mrs. Reinacek.
Thank you. I just had a quick little story for you. So my husband went to South and in school, he left for part of the day as a work release because he wanted to be a graphic artist, but he went to work at Quad. And so he, this year is his 30th year at Quad. He actually went on to start a tech school and he thought, well, Quad really wants me full-time. He bought a house and so he's just been there. He never went back to school. He thought he would, but he supports our family. There's five of us and we have a beautiful house. It's like you, yeah, I'm glad to hear that your parents are coming around because you can actually have a really nice life and not go to college. I mean, you don't need to. And so I just, I'm glad that you're following your passion and your dreams and wish you all the success.
Thank you. It's honestly amazing how many people have 20-plus, 30-plus years at Quad for how short of a lifespan it's had. You'd think that there wouldn't be that many, but there's an amazing amount of people that have multiple 20-plus years in the industry just because it's such a nice place to work and it's a pretty like friendly environment to hop into. And even me being half the age or a fourth of the age of some of the people that work there, they still kind of accept me as one of their own a little bit, so it's nice.
Zach, do you mind telling us a little bit about the apprenticeship, when you started, what you've learned?
Yeah.
What's a typical day look like? That kind of thing?
Yeah, so I started, January 9th was my first like orientation day. Pretty much on a daily basis, I go to different departments all the time. So today I was in automation. It was my second day there. Usually I'm not, they restrict us on a lot of things that we're able to do because we're under 18, which I'm not a huge fan of, but I totally understand all of the laws and with the insurance policies and stuff. So usually I'm just to observe and watch how people are to run their machine and how they got so good at what they do on a daily basis. So I knew some of the basics about the press because Waukesha North is fortunate enough to have two presses. So I was able to learn the most basic standards and workings of a press. But now seeing the industry presses that are many, many times bigger and many, many more expensive, it's just crazy how much I've learned, all of the inner workings of the machine, even when it's running, because they can't really shut it down just to show me something. So I kind of have to learn from afar because of the danger purposes. So it's crazy, honestly, how much paper goes through and how much I've learned, even just for the fact that me just sitting back and watching everybody.
It still is an industry that's alive. People who think that paper is just completely gone and it'll all be electronic, we've been saying that for decades and decades. So it's still a very much alive industry. Obviously, competition is tough, but Quad has done things right and you're learning from one of the best companies actually in the world. So it's a great, great opportunity. Mr. Dietz.
Do you have any plans to share your success story with other students in the district? Because I think you do a great job at selling your story and I think if that could get out to more students, there might be others that would like to follow in your footsteps or at least have you as someone that they could consult with.
Thanks. Yeah, I've shared the video around a bit, like on social media and whatever, and I've told a bunch of like my friends or people in my classes about my opportunity that I've been given and how much of a nice job it is and like just how great it is, even just for the fact of me being able to get out of school a little early and get paid for doing it. It's a really nice environment and everything. So yes, I've tried and if I were, was given more opportunity, I would for sure take those.
I think you should or keep asking. Keep asking. Awesome.
Any other questions for Zach? Well, Zach, congratulations on being selected for the apprenticeship. We wish you luck moving forward and thank you for sharing your story.
I appreciate it. Thank you for having me up here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Zach. I'm sorry. Nope, that was it. I'll keep you posted on Zach's success after school. We'll let you know who wins that one.
Go to Hollywood.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Gray. Next, we'll be moving on to our student representative report. Tonight, we have students from Waukesha South, Ernesto and Mia. Please come forward.
Mia wasn't able to make it tonight. She had to work, so it's just me running the show today. So as you know, my name's Ernesto Castro Lopez. I was here a couple months ago. I'm the Public Relations Officer for the Student Council. Thank you for having us here, or having me here tonight. Sorry about that. And letting me share you what South has done this year. So I'd like to start off with our academic awards. We had 19 students receive over 30 or above on the ACT this year. They're proud of them to have joined the South's 30-plus club. Next, we have our robotics team. The Waukesha Core 2062 Robotics Team recently competed in the first robotics Wisconsin regional competition. They competed against 53 other teams from across Midwest. Coming out of the qualifying round, the team was ranked first in the field. The team also won the Innovation and Control Award, sponsored by Rockwell Automation, and performed very well. This past week, they also competed in the Seven Rivers Regional and they actually received the all-time high score for their team. Additionally...
Unbelievable. Unbelievable, actually.
Yeah, extremely proud. Additionally, this victory placed, actually qualified them for the World's Competition held in St. Louis and they also have the highest score in the world. So it's really proud, really proud. I mean, I have a couple of friends on the team and they put a lot of work in and it shows what, when you get together and decide to set a goal, it really pays off. Next, in our athletic department, as you know, the boys swim team won the state competition this past February. They did a great job and they put in the work that I've, from what I could tell, was extremely, they deserved it a lot. They put in time, work, both in-season and outside of season. Was told that they really wanted it and they knew that they had talent to get it. It was just the mindset that they had was that, they going into the state competition, they went out, they performed, and they got the result that they wanted. The Waukesha South Palms team placed seventh this year at the state competition. And additionally, senior Brianna Hennis was named to the Badgerette Disney All-Star Talent Tour and spent some time in Orlando with the select team. And our cheering department team was the state runner-up in the Wisconsin Association of Cheer and Palm D1 Super Small Division and second in the non-stunt competition. Sophomore Hunter Keel represented Waukesha South at the state gymnastics competition. Our Waukesha Wings co-op hockey team had a great season and ended up taking second at the state tournament. Basketball, Keaton Stremmick was a finalist in the state three-point shooting competition, finishing as a runner-up. And the Waukesha South Girls Golf Team received an honorable mention for the Academic All-State Team from the Golf Coaches Association of Wisconsin. Sorry about that. So as a team, they had a cumulative GPA of 3.628. These young ladies demonstrated excellence both on the course and in the classroom. We are proud of their high honor from the Coaches Association. Our Classic Eight Sportsman Award, the wrestling team was awarded the Classic Eight Sportsmanship Award, which makes six total sportsmanship awards for the school this year. Next week, we will be celebrating our Scholar Athletes. These students are athletes that have maintained a 3.5 or better GPA or better during this year. This year, we have 240 Scholar Athletes. Of these, 21 are three-sport athletes and one will be a four-sport athlete. In regards to the Student Council, we had a blood drive today and we had over 60 students and teachers donate blood. That makes, this makes South's third blood drive of the year. For debate, we are proud to announce that after a long and well-fought season, one of our debate teams has qualified for the national competition in Louisville at the end of May. We also had three other teams qualified as alternates for the national competition. HOSA, which is the Health Occupation Students of America, which is a biomedical health science club, they had their state competition this past week and South was represented by 29 students that qualified for the state competition. And I'd like to, I'm very proud to report that six of these students have automatically qualified for the national competition to be held this summer in Orlando, as well as nine other students have qualified as alternates. In our music department, our band and orchestra and choir programs have all put on several concerts this year. I personally have been able to attend one. I've just been so busy with school. But from what I could hear, it's very well-run. They put on several performances, everything from classical to pop. They were, they had lots of celebrations for the hard work and that they're put in. I think that they deserve it. They are honestly a great group of individuals that are very talented. And the South Music Department competed in the Wisconsin School Music Association District Solo and Ensemble Festival. South had 75, or performed in 75 of the events at the festival and had over 100 participants. Of these, South had thirty-three events receive a one-star rating, which qualified them for the state solo and ensemble festival to be held at UW-Whitewater at the end of April. Our theater program put on a production of The Addams Family in March. It was ex- it was pretty funny. It was great. I had a great time going to watch it. I it was, I highly recommend the next one. Uh, if you have the opportunity to go watch it. Uh, they, we had a couple of nominations for the Tommy Awards, which are essentially a Tony-style award program for the high school uh theater. Um, would it, within these, we had uh outstanding ensemble, orchestra, direction, musical direction, choreography, stage management, scenic design, costume design, support design, supporting performances uh from Sophie Mintz and Tanner Orr and lead performances from Santana Ferretta, Jude Kramer, Zoe Maza, Drew Running, and Marissa Welving. Our next play will be a comedy titled Borderline Crazy. Performances will be at seven PM on May twelfth and three and seven PM on May thirteenth. So expect to guys be there. Highly would recommend it from what they put on at The Addams Family. Uh, here's an update on our senior avid class. Currently, there are three avid seniors with full four-year tuition scholarships at UW-Madison for this upcoming fall. Uh, I personally know one. He's one of my good friends. He's also a teammate. Uh, four years to within the people program that they have at Madison. I think for all the work that he's put in, it's well-deserved for just the amount of effort and time that goes into and to what they need to attain this. Uh, all of our senior avid students have applied to colleges and have been accepted. All right, and South's avid program next year is excited to announce that it will be expanding into Waukesha North and E-Achieve. Additionally, Wes Butler and Les Paul are considering implementation for the twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen school year. Our students and staff are ready and willing to support these programs in any way that we can because we have seen the impact that avid can have on students. South freshman Julia Harrod and her teammate Jasmine Erickson from Waukesha West won first place at the Young Innovator Challenge at the Chicago Toy and Game Fair with their design of a game called Field to Find, which is a sensory censorory game for ages five and up. They also had a lot of positive attention at the National Toy and Game Fair in New York. We are proud of their ingenuity and creativity. Our visual arts department had twenty students receive schol- Scholastic Art Achievements Awards from the state with nine of them earning National Golden Keys Awards. This is a huge accomplishment and we are very proud of them. Waukesha South junior Grant Furkovich recently earned his Eagle Scout rank. He organized and directed the construction of two raised garden beds for the Waukesha Transitory Tran- Transstitution Academy as his final project. Not only was this a huge accomplishment for Grant, but he also chose to give back to the school district with his final project. So as you know, Governor Scott Walker visited South High School two weeks ago and tou- toured our building. He said that he was impressed with a lot of the programming that South and the academies are doing. He likes to see uh hands-on problem-solving and praised our students for giving, for doing their great work. After the tour, the governor gave game, gave a short press conference regarding the state's upcoming budget cycle. He has proposed increasing funding for education. South was very honored to host this event. So that was the last thing on our list. Uh, I'd like to thank you for having me this evening. I'm very proud to be able to represent ours, this Waukesha South here tonight. Uh, is there any questions?
Wow, that, oh, Mr. Brian.
Can I ask questions? You know, you do a very nice job of representing South. I it it first of all, I I want to really want to compliment you and um, you know, you and the previous student that was just up here and also the the group that was up. You almost wish every night you could put this type of stuff in front of people to see what how important our school system is here in Waukesha to keeping us a strong and good community that produces outstanding citizens. And uh, so I really appreciate your presentation, even though you had to do it all by yourself, you hung in there pretty well.
No problem. I enjoyed the challenge.
Mrs. Brusink.
You're a wonderful representative of South High School, and you should be very, very proud. You really, really gave us a thorough report about just about everything that was going on at South. Wonderful school, wonderful activities, great learning activities. Keep it up.
You can tell that you're really happy to be at South.
Yes.
Oh, yeah. Well, uh, actually, my uncle went to South and he graduated from in twenty-ten, so it's kind of interesting to be back and see, like if I mentioned my uncle's name around South, they'd be like, oh, you're his nephew? So it's kind of an interesting feeling, and I always ask him about it, like, hey, do you know this teacher? And he'd be like, yeah, he's my teacher. So it's uh pretty interesting to see how much, not only has it changed, but how much it stayed the same. Where I'm pretty excited to see where's the school district will go into the future.
Well, thank you, Ernesto. Great job.
My pleasure.
Okay, we're going to move on to uh the part of our meeting where we listen to our citizens. Uh, as has been past practice, we allow uh each individual to speak three minutes. Um, at the two-and-a-half-minute mark, Barbara Zink will give you a thirty-second uh notification, asking you to wrap your comments up. We expect that all speakers uh will honor our time limit and refrain from using any inappropriate language in any manner and be respectful in their comments. Speakers who do not meet uh these expectations will be prohibited from speaking at future Board of Education meetings. Uh, we also expect that the audience will be respectful of the speaker and of the Board of Education and refrain from responding with verbal comments, cheering, applause, or other behavior that uh is distracting. Also, in order to uh respect our speakers, please uh silence your phones if you haven't done so uh yet. And we do have three people signed up to speak tonight. Um, Kimberly Coronado will start us off.
Hello, my name is Kimberly Coronado. Um, I am a parent of three kiddos in the Waukesha school, actually four, um and three have autism. Um, I didn't have plans becoming an advocate for children with disabilities, but here I am. Um, I am their voice, and I've learned very strongly how to be their advocate. Um, I've learned how to don my super cape as April is Autism Awareness Month. Um, I'll just hold it here. Um, I just wanted to say thank you to some of the schools that I know that did an excellent job doing autism awareness um for the week of of spring break or whatever they did a uh a um spirit week where they dressed up in autism awareness things. Um, Les Paul did a great job. Um, just hats off to um a couple of the teachers that just blew it out of the water. Um, very caring, very compassionate, very, and every day they do a great job. Um, also, there is a Parents United speaker coming, Paula Cluth. Um, it is next Wednesday from nine to twelve-thirty at WCTC. And I have pamphlets for you if you want to look at it, but she is talking about inclusion. Autism, aren't we doing inclusion already? Um, she's a offer, author of fifteen books, and she will hopefully um educate all of us on inclusion with children with autism. I just encourage you to come and to learn beside us. Um, Templeton, uh Temple Grandin says children with autism are different. They're not less.
Thirty seconds.
Oh, my goodness. Okay. So I just want to encourage you to um look at the services that are available for children with autism, including ADA services in school. I would like you to um just remember that it is part of the ADA and idea and free appropriate education, um, including these children in public schools and allowing them to have services like-
Time.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Paul Reese.
Good evening. Um, last month, I made a statement and I said all Israeli schools have firearms in it, and I made a definitive statement, and I shouldn't have. It should be. And I would like to take that back. Um, I wanted to talk a little bit about, since concealed carry was brought up last month, and I talked about it, and I'd like to talk about it again tonight and about gun safety and what is an accidental discharge of firearms, because that was brought up. And also, maybe if I get to ask some security things. Um, but people talk about accidents with firearms, generally, they're talking about hunting. Hunting is completely different than concealed carry or carrying a firearm. You don't hear of police officers having accidents with their firearms, for example. Generally around hunting, cleaning, or someone leaving a loaded gun around un- un- unsupervised, um, which is an absolutely foolish thing to do. Um, all guns should be treated as loaded, um, but the whole idea behind concealed carry is to never touch the gun. And to never touch it unless I absolutely need to. Firearm except for in a case where my life or my family's life is in danger. In front of it. I do believe that there are evil, bad people out there, and I just want to be clear from them for myself. Um, but the the point of it is I should not ever touch a gun. I should never, if I conceal it, it should never come out of my holster. Police officers carry them all the time. They don't, but when you're hunting, you're handling guns, and people confuse the two accidents. They want to say this accident is the same as this, and they're very different cir- circumstances and situations. Concealed carry has made it a safer situation with firearms in this manner. The more I carry a gun, the more I load it, unload it, and become familiar with that firearm, the safer I become with it. Like driving or anything else, the more experienced you get, the safer you become. Same with firearms. The firearm fatalities compared to ownership have gone way down because of things like this, because people become more familiar. And it does help in hunting accidents as well. The more familiar you are with your firearm, the safer you become. Um, also about security, it's some things that I feel it, community may feel too secure because we have, we've invested so much in in what we do to get into schools. In California, they just had a situation where a guy came into the school and shot his wife and and a student. He went to the office and checked in. Buzzed, checked in, went, and done this.
Thirty seconds.
I'm sure with every security measure that's there, there becomes, when you lock a place in, you don't lock only bad guys out, but you can lock good guys out too, in a situation where where a bad guy does enter the building. Another thing is there is one way to get around all the security that's there, and it's called recess. We put our kids into a pen and we send them outside, and there have been open-air shootings in Texas and the university. Can't remember which university it was in the seventies.
Time.
So it's, those are just some of the things I wanted to talk about. Thanks for your time and have a good night.
Thank you. Um, Ms. LaTo- Latonya Evans. Sorry, Latonya.
Hi, this is my first time ever doing something like this, so I'm a little, uh, just a little nervous, but-
We're just average people.
I want to say thank you uh for giving me this opportunity or allowing um individuals to speak. But um I am the parent of a child on the autism spectrum within the uh Waukesha district. With the rise of autism and the ever-challenging behaviors presented within the classroom, our teachers and paraprofessionals are having to take on the role, which most are more than willing to take on, the challenge, but but are at times not trained on how to handle these complex behaviors. The teacher then is left not being able to focus on what they are trained to do, which is teach. The paraprofessionals are operating um a lot of times outside of their trained skill ability. There is an opportunity for the district to be able to allow trained behaviors to come into the school with no expense to the district to be a part of a child's educational team. When everyone can operate to their fullest and their trained area of expertise, the outcome is much more favorable for the child and for everyone working together as a team. The way I see it, there is related services allowed into the school to help address issues with the child, such as physical therapists to address physical issues, occupational therapists to address things related to fine motor skills that can affect the child within the school environment. There is also the speech therapist who addresses speech issues. These are very specific disciplines, don't, that don't cross over, um, I'm sorry, these are very specific disciplines that don't cross over because for a occupational therapist to try and work on physical therapist, uh vice versa, uh with the speech therapist uh venturing over into another discipline, discipline, there could be harm done without meaning, meaning to. So goes the same with behaviors. These individuals have been trained in behaviors, and especially with kids with autism. And there is proven scientific data that using these techniques can be very helpful with reducing problematic behaviors. I am sure the teachers and paraprofessionals would welcome the help and support. I ask that the district take seriously, not that you haven't, uh, but looking at implementing very vital resources uh such as having behaviors to be able to come into the school to help our children access FAB in a meaningful way, given, given the much-needed support to our teachers, paraprofessionals, and to really make a difference um our, in our children's lives. Time is the essence.
Thirty seconds.
And we don't want to waste any more time already lost by not utilizing this type of resource that is available. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to address the Board of Education that didn't sign up earlier? Okay, thank you. Moving on, we do have a number of um minutes to approve tonight. Uh, minutes from March eighth, twenty-seventeen, our regular Board of Education meeting. March eighth, twenty-seventeen, executive session. March twenty-seventh, twenty-seventeen, we had uh an expulsion session. Is there a motion by anyone uh for approval?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Brusink.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. McCaffrey. Any discussion or corrections? Sue, will you take the roll call vote, please?
Barbara Brusink.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Karen Reinichak.
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
Greg Dietz.
Aye.
Patricia Madden.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye. Passes nine zero, Sue. Moving on to our communications uh report, uh, Dr. Gray.
I have uh two pieces of correspondence this evening. Uh, the first one is from Dave Sternig, Commissioner of the Classic Eight Conference. And he is writing to congratulate Waukesha South High School for being recipient of the Classic Eight Conference Sportsmanship Award for Wrestling. And the second letter is also from Mr. Sternig, our commissioner, uh congratulating Waukesha North High School for being recip- recipient of Classic Eight Conference Sportsmanship Award for Wrestling, Boys Swimming and Diving and Girls Basketball. That's my correspondence for the evening.
Thank you, thank you. And Mrs. Brusink, do you have a Waukesha Education Foundation report?
I do. Thank you very much. The last uh Teaching and Learning Committee meeting, oh, excuse me, the grant applications were due by April seventeenth, so that was Monday. Okay, uh, the Education Foundation received over thirty applications, so I'm very pleased with that. The Waukesha Education Family Fun Walk and Run will be held on May thirteenth, so mark your calendars. Online reservations, um, registration is available until May sixth, and you may also register in person by contacting Callie Motte at two-six-two-nine-seven-zero-one-zero-three-five or by stopping uh in the Lynn Home Building. The golf outing will be held on Tuesday, September twenty-sixth at Western Lakes Golf Club in Peewaiki. The cost will be eighty dollars instead of the one hundred and twenty-five dollars last year. And that ends my report. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Brusink. Moving on to our Safety Committee reports, we do actually have uh two reports to give, one for March and one for April. One for March, given by Mr. Baumgart.
Yes, thank you. I attended the Safety Committee meeting on March fifteenth. Amanda was committed to something else that day. And uh quite simply, we reviewed the student workers' compensation injury reports, and nothing very unusual came forward. Minutes of the previous meeting were approved. One item which was received quite a bit of discussion was uh over the number of first responders. Those are the teachers and staff members we have that have to be trained in dealing urgently with a CPR or something like that. Uh, uh, we have enough in many of our schools, but we are short in other schools, so we, one of the issues is we need to, need to come up with some more first responders. Uh, so there was a bit of discussion about the situation and questions came up and things like whether it should be mandatory or voluntary, whether we're doing the best job of scheduling those sessions as to fit the needs. Uh, reluctance on the part of personnel because of there, there's some concern, you know, that what they're getting into. And the the cost that uh was provided, required of the teachers to pay for it, which is being dealt with. I brought that up, and we're going to be talking about that with administration. Uh, another item that um will be researched, this is again March, would be about school drills and evacuation sites. That is where the children would go if there is a need to evacuate the school. It has to be part of our plan, and I think that already probably is being addressed by Joe and family. And that would conclude the Safety Committee report for March, and I'll turn it over to Amanda for April.
Hi, Amanda.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Safety Committee met again this morning um at the-
The safety committee met again this morning at the service building as usual, and we, the accident reports for the staff and students were reviewed, and thankfully, again, there was nothing unusual there. Minutes were also reviewed and approved. Addressing old business, which the item that Mr. Baumgart just mentioned with the first responders, it was looked into, and it is recommended that ten percent of the staff be CPR certified, and we do meet that at every building in the district, so we are covered that was looked at and announced today. New business that was addressed, there was discussion regarding South High School wishing to raise chickens at the school. That is being looked at, and the results will be, the answer will be given to South. Eric Giggs told me that you think you know where that answer's going. Brief discussion was, had regarding gardens and the produce that comes from them, what is done with that. Most of it is donated, so that was nice to hear. Statewide tornado drills will be this week, that's actually tomorrow, the 20th. And more, brief discussion was also had regarding dogs on the district properties. Weather's getting nicer, people wanting to bring their dogs out with them. It was stated that, according to our district policy, that the dogs are not allowed on our property, so some of the principals that were in the room will be, you know, kind of sending reminders out to, to their families. The next safety committee is scheduled to meet on Wednesday, May 10th, 2017, at the service building. And with that, Mr. President, I conclude my report.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Roddy. Moving on to our charter, school, and program report, Mr. Baumgart.
Thank you. I have just several items I'd like to include in the report tonight. With everybody being off for a week or so, it was hard to get them fired up to get somebody back to me, but a couple of things that I came up with, this, earlier today, a combined group of governance board members from STEM, the Engineering Academy and Health Academy, met in a training/leadership program to talk about responsibilities of governance boards' vision and purpose. The outcome of that will be something for the future. Another item, Rose Glenn Elementary School, we have previously talked about the fact that it's important to recognize programs in all schools, not just the charters or the special programs, and I chose this month to mention a visit I made to the Rose Glenn Elementary School. At a recent training and learning meeting, Melissa and Nicole, our principal over there, presented on their efforts to integrate an international perspective into all levels. I was very impressed with the visit and the success they are having with this idea. The students are very engaged in learning a lot, excuse me, learning a lot about what goes on around the globe. I'll just take a paragraph here from Melissa. "We are working on building global competence in our students and staff. Each of our grade levels has adopted a part of the world to include in their school year, and language workshop is the vehicle we use for investigating the world, understanding multiple perspectives, communicating ideas, and taking action." And I will include a little bit more about that in the packet for Friday, along with some pictures that Melissa sent me. And one last item, and I think maybe board members received this, but I wanted to mention it here. Two of our schools have received from the Department of Public Instruction, Hadfield Elementary School with Al Bush as the principal, and Banting Elementary with Mary Garcia Velez as the principal, received a notice from the DPI that they have been informed that your school has earned a 2016-2017 Wisconsin Title I School of Recognition Award, and that's just another piece of things going well for us. Thank you.
Excellent. Mr. Byrne.
Just out of, I'm, I'm going to add to Mr. Baumgart's report out of, I'm sorry.
Can he add to yours?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because it's autism awareness.
Go ahead.
I want, I want to, I want to comment that unfortunately, we can't easily talk about, you know, our students and what they accomplish because of the rules about that. But I do know of a situation in our past, and it's been some time past, where we had a family choicer autistic child into our school district, and that child not only became the youngest graduate in, I think, school district of Waukesha history, but also was the valedictorian of the class. So, we do have a tremendous track record with autistic children, at least through that one individual, so that was, and that, I wanted to add that to the report.
Good addition.
I'm sorry.
You owe him one, though. That concludes your report?
It would come, yes.
Okay, thank, thank you, Mr. Baumgart. Mrs. Roddy and Mrs. Reinicek had a chance to go to our Capitol recently, and they have a report to give on that. Ms. Roddy?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. This is just a brief recap, basically, what we spent our day, and this is why I was not at my safety meeting, thank you, Mr. Baumgart. But Mrs. Reinicek and myself did attend on behalf of the Waukesha School District, day at the Capitol on March 15th. Brief recap, as I said, we initially heard a state budget briefing with Secretary Nitezel with the Department of Administration. He kept that as lively as he could, as for those who aren't as fond as numbers, but it worked. And then we said, we listened to a bipartisan legislation panel, which consisted of Senator Olson from Ripon, Senator Schilling from La Crosse, Representative Voss of Rochester, and Representative Greenwich of Green Bay. And basically, what they did was they just, the WASB had come up with a list of questions, kind of going off of what's in the budget, asking them, you know, where they felt on different aspects of it, and it, the discussion went back and forth amongst them, and from there, we went on to hearing a debate between the state superintendent candidates at that time, and then we broke off into the different meetings with our legislators. We were able to sit down with Representative Nealan, Representative Duchaud, Representative Allen, and Senator Cappenga. Three major issues that were brought up to them were per pupil aid, rural schools, and the start date of the schools in the state of Wisconsin. Kind of got some feedback from them. And then the other districts that fall under their representation asked other various questions with, mostly with regards to the budget, because that's pretty much why we were all there, so. That in about three minutes summed up a whole day out there in Madison. So if there are any other detailed questions you might have, it, myself or Mrs. Reinicek would be happy to answer, but with that, I conclude my report.
Okay, thank you. Any questions of, of them right now? All right, thank you. Moving on, we have a consent agenda before us. Mr. Clark, did anyone provide gifts to the district this last month?
Yes, five gifts. The Charles Horowitz Planetarium received three of those, $1,000 from the Urethane Systems Plus Inc., $1,000 from Marge Holsberg, and $11,000 from Friends of Redstone Nature Center. These gifts will be used to purchase the new equipment the board approved the other night for improvements at the planetarium. The next one is SPX Transformer Solution donated seventy, $750 to the Waukesha North High School Graphics Club to be used for purchase of new equipment and supplies. And lastly, the St. Luke's Lutheran Church donated $1,363.39 to Whittier Elementary School to be used as support for the needs of the Whittier students.
Generous gifts. Thank you for reporting out on that, and thank you for the gifts from each of those Your agenda includes various categories for approval this evening. If any board member wishes to have an item set aside, I will be asking at a later time if you would like to have something set aside. Included in the items for approval are decisions of the expulsion panel, which met on March 27th, 2017. The confidential communication regarding the details of the expulsion was in your Friday packet, along with the minutes included in your item 1G. If any board member wishes to discuss this item, we have scheduled an executive session at the close of the regular meeting. Approval of the consent agenda confirms full board agreement with expulsion panel's action. Does anyone wish to set aside any item at this time for separate consideration? Okay, seeing none, I'll pass it over to Ms. Madden.
Thank you, Mr. President. Earlier this evening, the Human Resources Committee approved of fourteen resignations, one leave of absence, and twelve new or modified teacher contracts. The information was provided in your packet, and an addendum was placed on your desk. Mr. President, I move that the consent agenda be approved as amended.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Byrne. Okay, Sue, please take the roll call vote.
Greg Dietz.
Aye.
Karen Reinicek.
Aye.
Barbara Brusink.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Patricia Madden.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye. Passes nine zero, Sue. Moving on to our superintendent's report, given by Mr. Gray.
I already had mine.
You don't want a second turn?
I...
Are you sure?
I, I used up my entire time a lot with our video, so I, I have, I have a lot more to say, but we'll leave it for another time.
Okay. It was on the agenda, so I had to ask you.
Okay, that's...
We'll move on to our committee reports now. First committee up is the Human Resource Committee, given by Pat Madden.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have some action items tonight, and the first one is the approval of the 2017-18 school calendar revisions. In response to teacher feedback that more time is needed for managerial work in their roles, the board is asked to approve three early release days. School will dismiss two hours early with the remainder of the workday available for teacher-directed work. The instructional hours are minimally affected, and our school district will still be within DPI state laws. I move to approve the 2017-18 school calendar with the revisions as presented.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Brusink. Discussion? Ms. Reinicek?
Thank you. I thought the reason we went to those actual full days off was because we were worried about would the teachers actually have enough time to have a meeting? Would they actually get a whole lot of work done? Interrupting the parents' work schedule, I thought that's why we made sure we were just...
We, we still have those, but in this particular case, with the new educator effectiveness requirements and the new grading policies, those days are, coincide with the end of a grading period, and for the most part, they have to be in their building to, to access grading, and, and so, we thought it would be a, a good move to make sure they can do that all at once. When they try to do it in pieces, often the system might hiccup on them, and then they're reloading it, so we thought this was the best way to do it. It's only two hours. I believe there will be the after-school care in a number of the schools, so it won't be a real inconvenience. I, it's something I did discuss with my parent advisory group, and they, they were understanding, they, you know, I, I think they would have liked to not have it, but I, overall, I think they're understanding, and I think they knew that with the, the teacher workload that we have out there, that it, it made sense, so. It's not a perfect situation, but it's the best I think we can do for this next year, given the fact we already have a calendar in place, and we already have a number of dates that we've sent to parents that are pretty much cast in stone. The year after, we may relook at that, though.
Okay, thank you.
Question?
Mrs. Brusink.
Mr. Gray, is, is that counted as a full day of school?
We don't, we only count minutes. We don't count days anymore, we count minutes, so...
Okay.
Yet, that's the other reason is, we, we, it's almost a full day, we'll be able to serve lunch, so the, the, all students will be eligible for the lunch, and those who eligible for free and reduced will get that lunch, and will also get the reimbursement. The other piece of it, going at two, is getting enough bus drivers in by that late in the day. Any earlier, it, it's tough to get a full slate of bus drivers in place, which is why we usually don't do a, a quick early release when we have bad weather, because you just can't get the, the drivers. And so, we, we tried to measure all the different components of this, and that's, seems to be the best compromise with, with, with parents doing lunch and also giving teachers enough time to get that work done.
Thank you, I'm sure the teachers appreciate it.
I, they, yes, they have, they have very much expressed their appreciation, so...
Thank you.
Mr. McCaffrey.
Followed to Karen's question, this is not going to be any PD associated with this.
No, this is, for they can do their, their grading work.
Okay, excellent, thank you.
All right, Sue, why don't we take the roll call vote on the 2017-2018 school calendar revisions?
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Greg Dietz.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Pat, Patricia Madden.
Aye.
Barbara Brusink.
Aye.
Karen Reinicek.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye. Passes nine zero, Sue. Pat?
Okay, the next item is the employee engagement report. Earlier this evening, the Human Resources Committee heard and discussed the district's work in the area of employee engagement. During the 2016-17 school year, administration took specific steps to determine levels of employee engagement by conducting face-to-face exit interviews with approximately sixty resigning or retiring employees, including a full district survey, which had a seventy-eight response rate, conducting stay interviews with more than ninety current employees, and digging deeper into major themes through the Superintendent's Advisory Committee for Professional Staff. Major themes from this work included the following positives about working in the school district of Waukesha. The job makes me feel like I am part of something meaningful. New ideas are encouraged, and my manager helps me learn and grow. Major themes showing the district's opportunities for improvement include time to do things efficiently and well, encouraging different points of view, support staff training, work-life flexibility for teachers, and pay and benefits. Administration's response to these themes has already started. Administration is working with principals to establish more flexible teaching collaboration days and times to avoid negative impact to teacher prep periods, and working with teachers and principals on solution-based problem-solving through the Superintendent's Advisory Committee for Professional Staff. In 2017-18, professional development will be limited to a half-day, to give teachers time to work on their own the other half of the day. There will be three early release days to give teachers time to work on their own, and we will be consolidating teacher evaluation with licensed renewal, renewal work to reduce redundant work for teachers. All employees will receive information about the employee engagement process through the HR blog on SDW Connect. Mr. President, that concludes my reports.
Okay, well, thank you, Ms. Madden. Did you have a question, Mrs. Brusink?
No, I was just a comment, if I may, please.
Oh, sure, absolutely.
I was just, I'm on the HR committee, we had a meeting earlier this evening, and I was just very, very impressed with the fact that the district did a workplace engagement survey and included all of the very important comments from, from staff, and are definitely making headway in addressing some of the issues that came up, and I, I really want to compliment you on doing that, and listening to teachers, very important.
Thank you. Well, my team obviously did a lot of the, like where Chris and Terry Schuster did the surveying, Jody's done some of the work to, to manage the, the feedback into the steps that Mrs. Madden had, had discussed, so...
Excellent.
It's, it's, but it, you know, it was a whole team effort, so...
It was an excellent thing to do.
This, yeah, this is important feedback, and to, to put this in perspective, I think we're the second-largest employer in Waukesha County, I think second to GE. We're a big organization, and, you know, it takes, it takes an effort to, to get true feedback from, you know, everyone in the district, and it's, it's a big effort. I was very impressed with going through the results, and what's even more impressive is that we're taking the feedback and acting on it, and that's not always done when, when you do these sorts of things, so, important work. Thank you for all, all the efforts that have gone forward.
We have due to some more components to that, and we'll obviously keep you apprised as we move along with that, but tonight, the, the approval of the calendar was a, was a major step in, 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 you know, working with this team, and, and I think, as it notes in there, engaged staff means engaged students. Engaged students will, will be better achieving, so...
And I, and I want to thank every employee that put forth the effort and took the time to give us the feedback, because without it, it's, it's, it's... to give us the feedback, because without it, it's meaningless, so, and we need open and honest feedback, so thank you for doing that, and I'm sure we'll hopefully carry this forward in future years, too, so
Oh, yeah, this will be a work in progress.
Thank you. Moving on to the Compensation Committee, also given by Ms. Madden.
Thank you, Mr. President. Compensation Committee met on April 3, 2017 to discuss the process for employee salary and wage adjustments for the 2017-18 fiscal year. Administration provided a study of comparable salaries and wages to neighboring school districts. The report Consumer Price Index Urban for contracts beginning July 1, 2017 is 1.26%. Administration recommends budgeting at least 2% in salary and wage increases to account for supplemental steps and lanes in various salary schedules, in addition to making individual adjustments as required. In addition, administration is considering adjustments for specific employee groups to bring them with the internal and external comparables. The 2017-18 budget will be adjusted to reflect recommended and approved salary and wage changes. This is an information discussion item, and no action will be taken at this meeting. Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Madden. Moving on to policy, given by Mr. Baumgart.
Okay, you probably got shocked when you looked at your agenda for tonight, when you saw that I'm bringing forward nine policies for first reading, but rest assured, it won't take all that long. What this amounts to is twice a year, as we've talked about before, Neola will be sending us stacks of policies that are up for renewal, very often because of federal or state compliance issues and things like that. So, that's mostly what I'm going to be talking about. This is not the entire packet we received from Neola about a month ago. Some more are still being reviewed under the HR umbrella and under the financial umbrella. Maybe I think under TNL, I'm not sure about that. I encourage you, though, to go over these between now and the next board meeting and ask the questions, if you have them, before we get to the board meeting, because if you get in, tied up in something, we do not have another policy meeting before the board meeting, so this will be the first reading I can give it to you, and the first time, last night was the first time that, the last time the committee, the Policy Committee was able to go over these before the board meeting. So, going forward, you have a stack of, like I said, nine of these. First one is a revision of policy 0100. It's a, it's a, it's a mess, it's labeled definitions. We had a number of technology definitions placed in there so that people understood when we were talking about communication tools or information research tools, that they are defined now in the policy. There's also one statement removed from the policy which dealt with agreement, because it dealt with, used the terms about collective bargaining agreement, which we no longer have available to us. So, that is what's in for policy 0100. At this point, any questions? Okay. Next policy was a new policy 0151.2, a Wisconsin state law requiring this policy be put into place, so there's really not much discussion on this one, other than what it is, and that is, as it says here, at the first board meeting in July, we will be putting, clearly identifying the student academic standards in our district. And Joe says the methods are in place for doing that, correct? Joe Cook, okay. Any questions on that one? Okay. The policy 2370 Educational Options, another Wisconsin state law requirement, and this requires us, oops, I got into the wrong one, there it is. This requires us to put and forward, forward to our public, a list of all the public schools, private schools, parental choice schools, charter schools, virtual schools, full enrollment, open enrollment, youth options, and so on, available to the youth of our community. And we will be doing that, and it will be posted on the internet for parents to review before the beginning of the school year, or at the beginning of the school year. Questions? See, I told you we could move along on this. You have a question?
No, not a question, but I'm, now that you've addressed me, regarding this particular policy, just want to make note, in the meeting last night, it was mentioned that this is not policy, but more so the implementation of the policy?
Correct.
For this particular one.
Yeah. And it's a very clear definition of what we have to tell them now. And by the way, if you look at that policy, you will see some references to, oh, wrong one, that's the one I grabbed by mistake before. Okay, hang on. 5111.01, homeless students. This policy has been completely rewritten due to federal, the Federal Every Student Succeeds Act, which goes into effect in the 2017-2018 school year. It is a rather lengthy policy in here. We had a policy in place, it is also attached here, the one in your packet. You'll see that the new policy is far more comprehensive than the previous policy, but again, this is, this is coming out of the federal act. Those who read on are going to see it grew. That was 5111.01, okay. 5111.03, the new policy. For children and youth in foster care, we do not have a policy before. This policy is also part of the required, because of the Federal Every Student Succeeds Act, it follows an awful lot with one we had on, just previously mentioned as a homeless policy, but again, it's a very comprehensive study about what services have to be available and how to deal with students in foster care. Questions? Okay. Number 5341, emergency medical authorization. I believe we had, yeah, this is the one. There's a few changes in here near the, end of the policy, you will see references that cross, cross-references that take us to the administrative guidelines, which will be deployed in each school district, including ours. Our administrative team will be working, is working on getting the administrative guidelines, which will be the supporting documents for this policy. Remember, in our previous world, we had policies, we had administrative guidelines, and we had Todd's rules. Now, all of the administrative guidelines that we have previously will be separated in one of those two directions, and they'll either be in this policy, or they'll be in our local rules. But that is, we will have that all worked on and completed. 5341. 5530, alcohol drug prevention. These changes remove the language about referral, the referral process and transfer it also to the administrative guidelines that will support this. It's just, it's, yes, Kurt?
Mr. Brian?
This one kind of confused me a little bit. It
It confused all of us, actually.
One of us last night were confused, too. Go ahead, and maybe Joel will help with this one, that, Joel. Go ahead, what's the question?
Well, I mean, I assume that this is a line that was put in there for some reason way back when.
One that was taken out?
Yeah, the one that's taken out about the staff liability, and, and you would think that we want to keep something in there, but we need to probably link it to the student handbook.
We actually are linking it to the administrative guidelines that
But even if you link it to the administrative guidelines, it probably should link, be linked to the student handbook, so that your, your student's aware, or the, in essence, the family's aware that your child could be referred to authorities, and we're not going to be held liable for doing that.
Oh, okay.
So, I think it, you know, it's kind of like just making sure we, we have that loop closed, so that it doesn't say, well, it's in our guidelines, what does that mean? You know? It doesn't have the force of law, it doesn't have an agreement of the child, so you might want to put that in
We're getting, we're getting a positive nod on that.
Okay, so, I mean, that's, yeah, anyway.
Do you have other comments on it, Joel? Maybe expound a little bit more on the why we pushed it into the guidelines?
The rationale for putting it in the guidelines is this gets into specifically how these policies, or how this policy is going to be implemented, and school by school, level by level in the district, we want to make sure that we're able to create a guideline that is fluid and responsive to the staffing model and the responsibilities assigned to staff in those schools. So, that was one of the other reasons for making sure that it was in a guideline.
But you're adding something to it, and I think that's a legitimate
I did note that it will go into the handbook.
Okay, but now I've got, now I got another question.
That's okay.
Based on
We never want to go on
We want to flesh it out, this is good to flesh it out now.
It wasn't asked, but
Mr. Brian?
Our administrative guidelines are uniformly applied across all the schools, right? I mean, it's not like we have different guidelines for different schools.
No.
That's not quite what I heard, but that's apparently, that's what I've explained.
Mr. Cook?
We may have a guideline that would address how things are operating at an elementary school, or a middle school, or a high school, just based off of what is involved at the elementary, middle, or high school, but not specific to a school. The polit, the administrative guideline would be drafted for the entire district, but there might need to be some specificity by level.
Okay. Thank you. That was 5530, 5780, student parent, student slash parent rights. These changes clarify the requirements of adult students, that is those over eighteen that want to restrict access to their records from their parents. That is basically all on the last page, it's a whole new section on the last page. Okay. Policy 8330, student records. Wisconsin state law requires the changes that were made in this section, and that is for us to be in, have an understanding with, for instance, the county board, the county offices regarding records for students, children, back and forth, so, quite simply, it's, we're there already, so it's just bringing it into print. And, if I'm not mistaken, that is the last one that we have to deal with tonight. Again, this is a first reading of those nine policies. If you have additional questions on those policies between now, any other questions?
Mr. Brian?
A statement, most of these are compliance-driven changes.
Correct.
Some of them are new mandates, not only from the federal level, but from the state level.
Several.
I find it frustrating that we have, for many years, we've had legislators come, we used to have our legislative day years ago, always promising to, to help us get rid of state mandates, but they seem to be the guys who continue to add more state mandates.
Still waiting, right?
Yeah, we're still waiting, they just keep adding more, so
By the way, it also, that triggered another comment I wanted to make clear. When we get these, twenty, thirty of these, twice a year from Neola, it is, they are reviewed, and there are some that we just don't accept at all, because our policy may be better than that one, or whatever. We don't have to accept these, but we do keep a record for Neola on which ones we are accepting, which ones we are rejecting, which ones we are modifying, and how we're modifying them. So, they will be our policies.
And that, just to expound a little bit on that process, Neola comes up with the recommendations, it goes to Joe and his team, and then it comes to our Policy Committee at the board level, and then it comes to you guys. So, it's, it's several levels of review and discussion.
And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms.
See, I wasn't so painful.
Thank you, Mr. Baumgart. Moving on to technology, given by Mr. McCaffrey.
I have no report this evening, Mr. President.
We'll move into financing facilities, given by Mr. O'Brien.
Well, I'm sure Mr. Baumgart plans to add to my report, since he didn't have enough at policy level. First of all, I'd like to thank the administrative team and fellow committee members that were able to attend the meeting on Monday night. I appreciate everybody making sure that we were able to have a quorum, and, and Ms. Madden, who chaired the committee in my absence, very much appreciated, and the administrative team was great at making sure that we were able to pull off a meeting Monday night. So, let's get on with the action items. We only had one action item at the meeting, it was the approval of 2017-18 student fees. The committee was presented with a recommendation for the student fees for this 2017-18 school year. There will be no changes in fees for 2017-18, with the exception of those mandated as part of the district's food service audit and other federal food service regulations. An exemption from raising student-paid meal prices is to be requested from DPI for 2017-18. Without the exemption, student-paid lunches will need to increase per the FDA formula as outlined in the Healthy Hungry Free Kids Act. The only fee increase being requested at this time is for adult meals. This increases the requirement included on our food service audit and is designed to ensure that adult meals are not being subsidized by the larger student program. Adult breakfast prices will increase from $2 to $2.70, and lunch prices will increase from $3.25 to $335, $3.35. The committee approved the recommended 2017-18 fees, including the student, student food service fees as presented, and authorized the administration to adjust student food service fees to be in compliance of federal guidelines, and I so move.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Second by Ms. Madden? Discussion? Okay, Sue, let's take the roll call vote on student fees for next year.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
Patricia Madden.
Aye.
Barbara Brzing.
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Karen Reinacek.
Aye.
Greg Dietz.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye, passes nine zero. Kurt?
Now, we're on to the information items, we had four items. There was a monthly budget update, like we always have. The committee was presented the budget report for the month of March. Fifteen million, eight hundred ninety thousand, one hundred forty-six dollars was reported into general fund revenue, and eleven million, one hundred one thousand, seven hundred ninety-nine dollars was expended during the month, so we came out ahead that month. Nine hundred fifty-six thousand, nine hundred thirty-nine dollars was reported in the special education fund revenue, and three million, one hundred seventy-two thousand, five hundred forty-three was expended, came out behind there. The district is operating, is operating in accordance with our budget projection in other areas. Second information item was the long-range budget forecast. Administration updated the committee on the district's financial outlook. A forecast based on the governor's budget proposal was shared, which showed a balanced budget based on current assumptions for the district in 2017, 2018. Please keep in mind that the state funding plan is not law yet, and though the funding is a positive, it is tied to resident enrollment, and is diminished over time by the district's continued declining in resident enrollment. In addition, the proposed categorical aid is potentially increasing, the district's revenue limit authority continues to decrease. Employee Health Wellness Center update, item number three. The committee reviewed a report on the performance of the employee health and wellness center, and I refer you to those who may have not, page eight in your packet, no, not page eight, page seven in your packet, shows that we significantly increased participation in our clinic this, from year one to year two. We're no longer the leader, the county overtook us, we'll fix that next year, of course, but you can see participation continues to grow, and it's a valuable part of our overall health plan for our school district employees. Item number four, facility planning. Administration updated the committee on our ongoing facility review. Last month, four board members and several district staff toured facilities in Elm Brook, Kettle Moraine, and Arrowhead. A request for an additional tour of area facilities was made and will be set up for interested members of the board. The next step in the process is to begin work evaluating facility space needs, enrollment trends, and scope of needs. In May, the administration will present a timeline and process to begin a thorough analysis of district facilities. Discussion items, unless Mr. Baumgart wants to add something, I have no discussion items. So, Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan.
I was trying, Kurt.
Moving on to our Teaching and Learning Committee, given by Mrs. Brzing.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our last Teaching and Learning Committee meeting was held on April 4, 2017, at six o'clock PM. Other no-action items, one information item, and one discussion item that will appear on the agenda for teaching and learning this evening. The first information item relates to DPI healthy school award winners, and at our meeting on April 4, Summit View Principal Jeff Peterson, teacher Penny Crining, and parent Nikki Reese, along with West Paul, Les Paul Principal Rob Bennett, provided insight into positive changes their schools have made to promote wellness in classrooms and in the community. Summit View and Les Paul, along with Higher and South, were awarded the 2016 Wisconsin School Health Award from the DPI. A student achievement update. North High School, at our April meeting, North Principal Becky Newcomer, Assistant Principal Kristen Hagens, and teacher Emily Hernandez, Jenny Wenke, Mike Demille, and Kristin Wisneski, were present to share the positive progress Waukesha North High School has made through the Assistance of the Sale, which stands for School Administrators Institute for Transformational Leadership. It really relates to school improvement framework. As board members know, all Waukesha schools are following the school improvement framework. Thank you, Mr. President. This concludes Teaching and Learning Committee reports, and our next meeting will be held on Tuesday, May 2. reports, and our next meeting will be held on Tuesday, May 2.
You, Mrs. Brusink. And that actually concludes all of our committee reports. So, at this time, moving on to other business, is there any recommendations for future board or committee meeting items? Okay, seeing none. We do not have to adjourn to executive session for review of expulsion panel, but we do have a need for an executive session. Mr. Baumgart?
Yes. I move that we adjourn to executive session per Wisconsin statutes 19.85, parentheses one, parentheses C, to consider employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation of any public employee over which the government, government body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility to discuss, responsibility to discuss preliminary and final notices of nonrenewal. I shall move.
Is there a second to that? Second by Mrs. Brusink. Roll call vote, Sue, on that?
Karen Reinacek.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
Patricia Madden.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Barbara Brusink.
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Greg Dietz.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye, passes nine zero. We will be going into executive session. We may have a need to reconvene to open session. Depends on what we discuss. Six or seven?
Six or seven minutes.
Six or seven minutes. Oh, I heard 60 to 70 minutes. So, maybe 10 minutes or so. We'll go immediately into, five-minute break. Five-minute break, or, okay. All right. I, I thought you were heading out.